You're recording.
This is Russell Oster, Chairman of the Planning Board. I'd like to bring this meeting to order for the Town of Brunswick Planning Board for May 21st, 2020. Everybody would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the republic.
For which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Russ, we'll do what we said last month or last week or last meeting. That when everybody talks, please state your name first because we have to do a transcript. When you're not speaking, please mute your audio so we don't hear everything in the background. Okay, you're encouraged to use headphones and a microphone so there's no feedback to create a loop. And if there's two or more you watch on the same room, make sure to have only one person's audio on. All right. There's your agenda.
Okay, first of all, I'd like to thank Pat for being our moderator for the second week in a row or the second meeting in a row. I don't know how long this is going to go on, Pat, but thank you for your time and your effort.
You're welcome.
Is on the screen, pretty straightforward. Ace Hardware Site Plan, Pharaoh Special Use Permit and Site Plan Number Three, Galivan Minor Subdivision. Number Four, Blue Sky Towers Three LLC. Cole and Selco Partnership Doing Businesses Horizon Wireless. This is a special use permit and site plan update. In regard to the cell tower agenda item, I just want to make sure that everybody knows that's logging on that this is not a public hearing. The public hearing has been completed. On the site plan, we have not received as a planning board any written response yet from the cell tower people regarding the comments made at the public hearing. So this is an update on some of the items that were brought up. So just so you know, this is not a public hearing. We are not taking any public responses or any type of comments. So with that being said, the first thing on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the past meeting on May 7th. However, those have not been submitted yet. So we'll have to wait until our upcoming meeting to review and approve those.
Russ, can I do the attendance, please?
Yeah, okay. That'd be a roll call attendance.
Member Henderson. I see you, Don, you don't have to unmute. Member Krieger.
Member Krieger here.
Member Minello.
Member Minello, present.
Chairman Oster.
Chairman Oster, present.
Member Peterson. Member Stancliff.
Member Stancliff here.
Member Tarbox.
Member Tarbox here.
Thank you, members.
Chairman Oster speaking, thank you Chuck. Now, the first item on our agenda is the Ace Hardware Site Plan. Is there a representative or the applicant here tonight?
Beau Michael, I'm the architect working with Ace Hardware.
This is Chairman Oster, thank you for joining us tonight. Could you just go over a couple of things with this? I got an email just to clarify something from the building department that there's actually a change of address and a change in the name of the applicant for this, is that correct?
As I understand it, yes. I didn't implement any of those, but I believe that's true.
I would have to, yeah, the way I understand the address is actually 825 Husick Road, not 831. And the applicant is actually 825-835 Husick Road LLC. They own the parcel that the new building is going to be on, plus they own the parcel for the Ace Hardware. So it's all basically under one ownership.
I believe that's all correct, yes.
Okay. So why don't you?
Well, Chairman Oster, Andy Gilchrist here, the Planning Board Attorney. I'm just gonna again post for the record that I do have a conflict on this particular application. So I'll recuse myself, I do represent the owner of this facility had other locations and in light of that, I'm going to recuse myself from participation in the review of this application.
Chairman Oster speaking, thank you, Andy, for reminding me of that, I forgot about that, thank you. Okay, Beau, would you like to give us a little rundown on, we have the drawing basically up on the screen, if you could just give us a presentation on that, please?
Yes, just to go back a little bit, we were approved a couple of years ago to tear the existing building down and put up a new two-story building with the parking and everything that supported it. They found they couldn't find prospective tenants to cover the cost of that building. Things like professional offices, medical offices and the like. But the hardware has a need for more storage and they found people interested in renting space for a cafe and for a gym and the existing building being better suited for that. We've decided to retain the existing building with an addition off to the east of the building. Couple of months ago, we presented basically the same scheme that sits before you except the parking in the rear of the addition. I don't know if we're going to have much success with my drawings here. But parking in the rear of the building was twisted so that it stayed further away from the wetlands. DEC has reviewed the plans and we sent a letter from D or an email from DEC saying they would approve this plan and that was sent to Charles a day or two ago. And that's pretty much where we are. Our parking is at the minimum of what you've required. And those calculations are based on the parking you demanded or requested for the hardware plus applying the town criteria for a gym and a cafe.
Chairman Oster speaking, thank you, Beau. I have a couple of questions. Just to confirm one thing, the existing building is going to be used and there is no change to the footprint of that. There's just an addition on the east side, I believe.
Yes. Okay. We are removing a portion of that existing building, which is the wood frame portion also on the east side. And replacing it with the addition, the addition is slightly larger than the piece we're removing.
Chairman Oster, thank you. There is a question on, and I'm going to address this to maybe Chuck. It's, this is 500 feet from a state highway, did we have to send something to the state on that?
This is Chuck. This is Chuck from the Building Department, we have to send to the county within 500 foot of a state or county roadway. And I am not certain if we have gotten that back yet. The access to the county, at one point, they were working just one day a week. So I will have to check on that, Chairman Oster.
And.
I can do that right now. Just the one other thing I would like to clarify regarding the parking, I was never really able to fully do the calculations on the parking because I did not get a layout to the cafe. The, that layout varies on whether it's fixed seating or movable seating. So I couldn't get an occupancy of that and thereby I really couldn't derive the parking numbers.
I think we've already determined it's not fixed seating. And what we did is we figured a quarter of the space to be kitchen. And so that drove part of the load and the rest of the space being the cafe. And that's how we came up with, I think, an appropriate number of spaces.
Okay, I'll verify.
This is Chairman Oster speaking. Attorney Gilchrist. Just as a technical question, can I ask you a technical question?
Unrelated to the particular application, yes, Attorney Gilchrist here.
This is a procedural thing. I'm correct that the, a public hearing, if we were to move forward on this, a public hearing would be at the discretion of the board, is that correct?
Yes, under the Brunswick zoning law, site plan regulations, the need to hold a public hearing is discretionary with the board. So you're correct on that point.
Thank you. With that being said, I'm going to open up the floor to anybody, the members that wish to make any comments or have any questions. Chairman Oster speaking again, I guess there is no questions on this. I will make a comment that since they're using basically the footprint of the existing building and moving, I guess, part of the, an addition would be a replacement of part of the older section with a newer section up front. That the impact on this site plan is probably minimal. And the configuration of the parking appears to be, at this point, correct. DEC has approved this plan as far as wetlands and so forth and so on. And the fact that this was originally supposed to be a two-story structure. So actually the, moving forward, they're actually minimizing the more thus the impact of construction on this site, I would have to assume. So my question now to the members is, is how do you want to proceed? You want to, do you think a public hearing is required? Can I hear from some of the members, please?
Just, this is Chuck Golden, just to back up a little bit, we have not received that back from the county yet, Russ. I will check on it tomorrow.
This is Chairman Oster, do I have any opinions on whether we need to have a public hearing? My suggestion would be that probably not. If that's the case, we could move forward, however, we have not received a letter from the county as far as a 500 feet from a county road.
Member Minello, I don't, I don't, I'm with you, Russ, I don't feel we need to do a public hearing for this as well.
All right. Unfortunately, I think we may have to wait until the next meeting to approve this if we don't have any word from the county at this point. I'm assuming that letter was sent out, is that correct, Chuck?
That is correct.
Okay.
Chairman Oster, I have a couple of questions. Wayne Bonesteel, engineer.
Okay, you're going to be my next person. All right, go ahead.
Beau, this is Engineer Bonesteel. Are you providing all the utilities to this building from the existing entrances? Are you changing anything as far as utilities?
The water service needs to be increased because we're sprinklering the building. Building is not currently sprinkled. And we are abandoning the septic and I'm not sure that's active or not, but will be public sewer and the water will be public. We're increasing the gas service, but that's from the same location, yes.
Engineer Bonesteel, again drainage on the backside where you're adding that parking, can you describe how you're draining that parking lot where the runoff is going?
Well, there is, there is a drainage plan on S 1.1, but basically the flight, the site is pretty flat and we're providing a slight bit of pitch from from the parking to that area of lawn between the parking and the wetlands. The wetlands are shown in the dashed red lines with the little red dots up there.
Again, this is Engineer Bonesteel. You're not adding any catch basins or any stormwater pipes or anything, it's all going to be sheet flow back to that swell, is that correct?
That's correct. Existing catch basins and pipes kind of back in that area, they're shown in a light yellow. Near the keynote five, there's an existing catch basin, for instance.
Also, Beau, can you briefly just describe what the landscaping is going to be? Because you've changed it. I won't say significantly, but somewhat significantly from the last application, you've actually made the circulation better. It seems to flow a little bit better with parking and traveling vehicles. So can you just, because you've switched things around a little bit, I just want to understand what you're doing for landscaping now.
Well, the plantings are shown on the detailed plan on that same sheet. And the schedule is within the legend. So the L1, L2 and L3 are all different plant types. They're all basically in lawn areas. And as I referred to, between the parking and the wetlands, there's a lawn area as well.
Engineer Bonesteel, again, can you just real quickly show how pedestrian circulation is from the parking areas into the building?
Do you see my cursor on the screen or not?
Yes.
So parking is located here. There's a two-way drive here, which continues to the back of the building. Parking here, parking, parking. The two main entrances for the tenants are here and here. And so we've got lawn area, lawn area, lawn area again, lawn area. And access for the storage portion is through the parking lot. And there's a rear door that all the tenants can use for exits or their own entrances to free up parking for the public out here. And that entrance door is here.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
This is Chairman Oster, Beau. Did you do a recalculation on the green space on this site?
Yes, I believe that's shown on the first drawing, S1. Green space is at 26.7%. Building area 23.8. And the paved area is at 36.5.
Now, Chairman Oster, again, is this is this an increase in green space or a decrease in green space from the from the plan we have right now?
You mean from the plan that was approved two years ago?
Yes, with the one you're working with now, you have now modified it, has the green space decreased or increased?
Increased, but not by much.
Okay.
This is member Stancliff, does the cafe require a grease trap?
Yes, it will.
And is that located inside the building or?
Yes, inside the building.
Chairman Oster speaking, is there any other questions?
Member Tarbox. Each business will have its own restrooms?
Yes. We didn't set it up that way originally, but that's what they've requested, yes.
Chairman Oster speaking, is there any other questions?
This is member Henderson. I'm struggling to understand what these round, what these circles are next to the addition. And my question regarding this is is there adequate space between the Ace Hardware building and this new addition for fire trucks?
I guess I'm not clear about the round things, but there's a 24-foot drive that goes around the back of the Ace Hardware along the side of the addition and connects to Husick Street.
So you don't know what these round things are?
Is there some way you can point to them on the drawing?
Right there. There's six of them along the east side of the building of the addition.
Are they dark black diamonds?
No, they're circles.
Oh, those are plantings.
Planters, well, that was my question. Between planters and what appears to be an overhang or some sort of structure next to the hardware store.
The plantings are very significant in height.
Sorry?
The plantings aren't very significant in height.
It's not the height that I'm concerned about is the distance between the planters and whatever this is over here on the west side of the hardware store, it has an angled at the northern side.
That's the existing fence. They have a patio, an outdoor patio center.
Okay, so is there sufficient distance for a fire to get through there, that's my question.
I guess I'm struggling a little bit understanding the question. The access would be this roadway through here.
Yes, right through there, right, what's, is there significant?
There's 24 feet of clear width.
Okay, that was my question.
This is Chairman Oster. Beau, have these plans been reviewed by the local fire company?
Were we supposed to initiate, not to the best of my knowledge, is that something you want us to initiate?
Usually what, in the past, a set of plans, I think in this case, it's I believe it's Brunswick One. We'll look at these plans and so forth and so on. I think between, obviously, we can't act on this tonight if we wanted to anyway, because we don't have a letter from the county. But I think it would be worthwhile for a copy of these plans to be sent over to the fire company, just to make sure that all the turning radiuses and everything. I don't think there's an issue, but you never know. So I think that would be in the best interest if we did that.
Well, I'm happy to do that if you can give me some contact information, an email maybe where to send them.
I believe Chuck can probably furnish you with that information.
This is Chuck from the Building Department, I will get right there to you, Beau.
Thank you.
This is Chairman Oster speaking, is there any other questions on the plan? Is everybody agreeable that a public hearing is not required? Okay, hearing no comments on that or negative responses on that. I would have to say that if we hit our letter by the next meeting, we can probably move forward with some type of approval. I would like to see the fire company hopefully be able to evaluate this before that. So why don't we put you on the agenda for our next meeting, which is scheduled for June 4th. We do have two public hearings scheduled for that, so it could be a little bit of a long meeting. I'm just going to give you a fair warning on that. Is there anything else that you need from us as far as, or wish to make any comments on this?
Beau? The only thing we need is the contact for the fire department.
Okay, we'll get you that.
Hi, this is Chuck, sending it now, Beau.
This is member Stancliff, I did have one further question. The parking along the east side of the building and that concrete sidewalk, those two elevations are flush with the building finished floor, is that correct?
No, they're slightly lower.
Okay, so there will be a curb and a ramp at the northernmost handicap stall?
Yes, if you refer to the detailed site plan, it's probably a little clearer. The elevations are marked and I think it's clear to see the handicap ramp.
So I believe that each each handicap stall would need a ramp if there's a curb in front of it.
If we're insufficient, we'll add another one. I mean, you're right, certainly shown one here, there should be one here if it's not shown, it doesn't look like it's shown.
And then again, on the face of the building, are those indicated curb ramps?
There's no handicap parking per se.
But the scoring pattern in the concrete sidewalk?
Yes, these indicate ramps that take you to a flat landing, take you to a flat landing.
Okay, so in those cases, the door is elevated above?
Slightly, yes, just to get water to move away from the doors.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay, this is Chairman Oster again. Is there any other questions for Beau tonight? Is everybody clear? Is everybody clear on how this is going to be put on our agenda for our next meeting? Yeah, I guess there's no other comments, Bo. Thank you very much for your patience and walking us through this. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you for accommodating me.
Okay. See you on the 4th. Okay, next on our agenda is the Pharaoh Special Use Permit and Site Plan. I would have to assume at this point that Attorney Gilchrist will now join us again.
Attorney Gilchrist here. You're correct, Russ.
Okay.
Chairman Oster, this is Pat Polito. Just want to mention one thing. The cursor everybody sees on the screen is my cursor. Not, wasn't Bo's, it was mine that's on the screen. So I'll try to keep up with you guys on moving to what you're talking about.
Is there, is there any?
You can also share the screen, correct?
Oh, I don't know, can I?
Yep, at the bottom of the screen. It says share screen.
Oh, hang on, mine are up at the top.
This is Chairman Oster. Why don't we try that at our next, when we have another blueprint up here?
Yeah, I gotta find it.
Brian Holbrider is going to be representing the Pharaoh Special Use Permit and Site Plan. So why don't we try that? Why do we have the, this letter up here?
Oh, I'm just waiting to go to the next one. I'm sorry.
Okay.
All right. All right, this is Pharaoh.
Okay. This is Chairman Oster speaking. Linda, the share screen here, is that green arrow there? And how do we do that? Just press it and see what happens?
Well, the person who started the the meeting needs to allow.
Where would it be? Where would that be?
I believe it's on the pull down view options. Do you have that on the top?
I'm working on it.
Sorry.
Well, that's okay. Just bear with me. Would it be remote control?
Yes, I think you can allow remote control. Is that correct?
This is Chairman Oster speaking. Brian, do you have any experience with this?
Brian Holbrider, Land Surveyor, no.
On the remote control just now, I put auto accept all requests.
Okay, let me try it from mine. It said that you disabled the participant screen sharing.
Didn't I?
You may have done that when you set up the.
Oh, you know?
Call.
Well, what I just pulled up is, I don't know if you guys can see it, I can give remote control to specific people.
Yes.
Okay.
Should, that should work.
Alrighty, so I'll give it to Brian at this point.
Okay. Do you have control of that, Brian?
Brian Holbrider, Land Surveyor here. I've, I'm taking my mouse and moving it over top of the drawing that Pat has up. I have it over top of the building on 1C. And now moving it over the top of the building on lot 1B. Is that, can you folks see that?
On my screen, it says, this is Pat Polito again. On my screen, it says waiting for Brian to take.
Brian on the bottom of the screen?
I think you got it now, Brian.
Okay. There you go.
Brian bouncing it around?
Brian Holbrider here. Yes, that's me doing circles.
Okay. This is Chairman Oster. Now that we have control of the meeting a little bit, Brian, would you like to give your presentation on, on the Pharaoh Special Use Permit and Site Plan?
Brian Holbrider, Land Surveyor. Yes, this project I originally brought before the board back in February before we had our halt to having meetings. At that time, the board members had requested some additional information. That additional information has been submitted. And one of the items was a question regarding the well water supply and how the Health Department felt about a well servicing a duplex building. And I submitted a letter from Rensselaer County Health Department, Engineer Derek Gardner dated March 12, 2020. That should be one of the items recently submitted. I also submitted New York State DOT driveway permits for both lots 1B and 1C. And then, member Manello had asked about having engineer Carl Aiken's drawings updated to reflect the layout of the duplexes and the driveways and the septics to more match my site plan, which Mr. Aiken had provided me, and I submitted those documents. So with all of that information and the information originally provided, I'm hoping we're working towards having a complete application.
This is Chairman Oster speaking. This is requires a special use permit. And consequently, a special use permit requires a public hearing on this. So in preparation for a public hearing, I think I reviewed some of the documents that you had mentioned. You seem to have the water supply comments made that were from the county that were okay for the duplexes. I saw the other documentation, so forth and so on. At this point, I would like to ask the board whether they have any questions regarding the the, the site plan or the special use permit, for that matter. Okay, I, this is Chairman Oster speaking. Does Engineer Bone Steel have any questions? Has he had an opportunity to take a look at this, plus the documents that were submitted with it?
Engineer Bone Steel here. I did have an opportunity to review all the documentation. And based on that, I feel that the site plan and special use permit application are complete. And I, I really don't have any comments.
Okay. Chairman Oster speaking. Attorney Gilchrist, is there any things that you would like to add?
Attorney Gilchrist, just, just a couple of things. One, we want to confirm that the application's been forwarded to Rensselaer County Planning Department for review and recommendation, because it is on a state highway. And secondly, I do want to review the language of the 30-foot easement on the west side of Lot 1C, just to confirm that having those parking spaces within that 30-foot easement right of way is not in conflict with the terms of that easement. So we should just confirm that. But other than that, no, no further comments at this point.
This is Chairman Oster. Just as a clarification, that's the easement that goes up through the whole original parcel all the way up to Pine Woods Avenue. Is that correct?
Attorney Gilchrist, that's my understanding. Brian, is that correct?
Brian Holbrider, Land Surveyor, you, you are correct. That 30-foot easement was given to the town of Brunswick to at some point loop the water line. And, and I think, you know, even with some parking spaces there, that, that that still would be able to be accommodated.
This is Chairman Oster. Any comments from board members at this point?
This is member Stan Cliff. The lots on Pine Woods Avenue that are also on this former large lot, they're significantly far away from these lots. Is that correct?
Holbrider, Land Surveyor. Yeah, they're probably 900 feet, 1,000 feet from these two lots.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions.
Chairman Oster, based on the comments from Engineer Bone Steel and the completeness of this, we do have to get a letter out to the the county. However, based on that, I think it would be appropriate to schedule a, a public hearing for this, which is required. We are usually going for two meetings away, so at this point, the next available date for a public hearing would be June 18. Is that an acceptable conclusion, Attorney Gilchrist?
Attorney Gilchrist, yes, it is. It gives us adequate time to get the public hearing notices published. I'm presuming, Russ, that that would be right at 7:00 PM.
Correct. You all, this is Chairman Oster speaking. Brian, are you all set with that?
Brian Holbrider, yes, that sounds good. If there's anything else needed from me, just please let me know.
Well, one of the things with it being basically two meetings out is the fact that we should get a response back from the county by then, I would assume. So that would work out probably to your advantage.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, that concludes the Pharaoh agenda. Next on our agenda is the Galivan Minor Subdivision. I believe Brian Holbrider is also representing that.
This is member Stan Cliff. I'll be recusing myself on this application.
Chairman Oster, thank you, Linda.
Brian Holbrider, Land Surveyor here. Yes, I am representing this project. This project, we also looked at, I believe in February. There were some questions as to whether we were gonna let this be a minor subdivision, or if we were going to have to make it a major subdivision. We really haven't had any further conversation about that. But there were some questions raised, I believe it was by member Tarbox, regarding the DEC wetland that is on the parcel on the south side of Deep Kill Road and on the easterly side of Smith Hill Road. And we had that looked at by North Country Ecological Services, and they've provided a letter which I submitted to be added to this application. That is dated April 3 of this year. And it would appear as though all of the wetland is on that three-acre parcel, which we are proposing to annex into that existing lot. And the 100-foot buffer from that DEC wetland comes out into the road, but does not cross over and interfere with our proposed improvements on those two lots right on Deep Kill Road. So I guess I would like to kind of just brush the dust off this, figure out where we're at with it, and get the board's input as to what we need to do to move towards having this as a complete application.
This is Chairman Oster. I guess there has to be a determination whether this is a minor or major. I'm going to ask Attorney Gilchrist to possibly fill us in on where we stand with this.
Attorney Gilchrist here, and I do apologize to the board and to Brian. Quite frankly, I'm not sure where we are on that, that this does need to be dusted off. I think I'd like the opportunity to get back up to speed on the application and review that with Engineer Bone Steel as well, so that we can make a determination of minor or major subdivision. And if the board is inclined to give us that, that time, we should have that determined by the next board meeting on June 4.
Chairman Oster, thank you, Brian. Are you okay with that?
Brian Holbrider here, absolutely. And if there's any information I can supplement to help with that determination, please feel free to reach out to me.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay, I'm going to just quickly open up the floor to the members. Is there any questions on this right now? Obviously, you see the problem. This has been a, an ongoing project for quite a few years, and it has been divided, so forth and so on. So we're trying to figure out exactly at this point whether it should be treated as a major. But is there any questions from anyone on this? Okay, this is Chairman Oster. Brian, we'll, we'll put you on the agenda for our next meeting scheduled for the 4th of June. And hopefully, we'll be able to determine that. Once again, this is going to require, even if it's a minor or a public hearing. So this, this may be one of these things that's going to go on for a few months here.
Brian Holbrider here. That's understood, and, you know, we just want to chug along and keep working towards a final goal here.
Chairman Oster speaking, thank you, Brian. We will put you on the agenda for the 4th of June, and hopefully we'll have a determination on the subdivision status.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman Oster, you're, you're welcome. That concludes the Galivan Minor Subdivision. The next item on our agenda is the Blue Sky Towers 3 LLC, which is the cell tower on the Zuki property. I'm going to, at this point, can I welcome back Linda at this point? Are you back, Linda? I'll assume she's back. Attorney Gilchrist, would you like to just review the, the shot clock thing we had with this?
Certainly, Attorney Gilchrist here. And certainly, the applicant, Attorney David Brennan, can, can fill in what, where I omit anything. But in general, this is an application governed by the Federal Telecommunications Act, and in conjunction with that, there are federal guidelines on timeframes within which determinations on the application need to be made, generally referred to as the shot clock period. And that period is capable of being extended upon agreement between the municipality and the applicant. In this case, the shot clock has previously been extended. We are coming up on the time of that extension, and we're now in discussions with the applicant on extending that shot clock timeframe. in discussions with the applicant on extending that shot clock timeframe. I'll let Attorney Brennan fill that in. Just as a matter of procedure, the chairman indicated earlier that this is not a public hearing tonight. There is a site plan, especially used for an application pending before the planning board, as well as a use variance application pending before the zoning board of appeals. The boards have held the public hearing, and the public hearing was closed on those applications. Public comments have been received. And the applicant continues to prepare formal written responses to those comments to submit to those boards. And I'll also note for the record that the town has retained LaBerge engineers. Ronald LaBerge is the review engineer assisting both the zoning board and the planning board on the review of these applications. And he's in attendance tonight as well.
Okay, this is Chairman Oster. I'm going to turn this over to to David to give us an update on this, if you would, please.
Certainly, it's Dave Brennan with the law firm A Young Summer. Can everyone hear me okay? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Dave Brennan, on behalf of the applicants in this matter. And so by way of background, certainly Attorney Gilchrist covered, I would say, the majority, if not all, of the the background facts, which is that we did have our public hearing back in January, a joint public hearing of both boards on the 16th of January. The board held those those public hearings open for the receipt of written comments, and those were supplied to me by the town. We're in the process of finalizing a response to that. I was hopeful to have it out by today, but honestly, I didn't want to drop that on your desks because this is one of those where we've had a little bit of passage of time due to world events. And so it's, this is, to borrow someone's phrase, a little bit of a dust off as well. But I do have my letter in response mostly done. I would hope, I'm waiting for some technical materials, and hopefully I can get that out in everyone's hands at the end of next week and respond to the public comments. I have my portions drafted, and I'm just waiting for some additional information. Coming forward in time, we took this time and some of the comments that we had received from the boards and the public. And what we did submit on May 5, which was distributed to the boards, was we have been taking a look at whether there were any alternative locations. And so before I get into that, though, I do want to circle back before I move on and forget is on the shot clock issue, Andy was entirely correct. The shot clock on the federal level for a new tower is 150 days, and that is subject to certain tolling of the running of that clock. And it was certainly told for a long period of time between when Mr. LaBerge issued his initial review letter, I'm going to say it was June 6 or so of 2019, and when we did our balloon fly and submitted a written response in November. And so that 150 sounds like it should have been over a long time ago, but it was it was not over until into 2020. And as Andy indicated, the parties have agreed to extend that time period through essentially the end of May, which at one time would have been plenty of time, but certainly we were intending to probably see you in in March, and that wasn't going to happen. And then certainly April, no one was having meetings. And so in light of that, we have requested and we're asking for both the planning board and zoning board to extend the shot clock through the end of June. And that's what I have agreement from my clients to extend. I do think as a practical matter, you know, we're going to have some meetings, I would hope, in June, and we'll see where we are. But I don't know necessarily that we'll get through this in June. So I would certainly think we'll probably be looking at another extension. But I I need to take that in bite-sized portions with with my client. And so the reality is, Andy would tell you privately that we don't want to be in a shot clock fight. We would like to extend it. The boards have all been working very nicely with us in reviewing this. And at some point, everybody will have enough information to make a decision one way or the other. That's really what the shot clock is about, is getting to a determination by the boards. My expectation right now is certainly I've not seen anything that anyone at the town of Brunswick is abusing the time period and reviewing it. To the contrary, you've been looking at things and responding. So don't, it always sounds ominous. I don't like talking about the shot clock because it sounds a little bit of a failed threat, but that's not where we want to go. I just need to make sure that I I don't let it lapse. And so I'm asking for the board to extend that. So what we have done in the meantime is we did submit this letter dated May 5. Our technical folks went out, and I do, I would note that if you could see them on your screen, we have Sarah Coleman from Aerosmith Development and Rick Andrews, our RF engineer on the on the screen, listening in right now and available if we have something in particular. But we did look at whether there were any alternative locations, as you recall. And Mr. Pleto, if you don't mind scrolling down, there's a map on page two that you had. Thank you.
There, you got control of the screen.
Thank you. So can everyone see my mouse? So we don't have the could people see my mouse?
This is Chairman Oster. I do not. I have my mouse running around, but that's about it. Okay, now I see one. Okay.
Okay, so that's my mouse.
I believe, yeah, okay, you're circling option two.
Yes, that's me. Okay, thank you. So Dave Brennan, taking taking back over, I gotta remember to announce myself. This is new ground for all of us. So this is the same map that the boards have previously seen that had three alternatives on it. Option three, which is closest to Creek Road, that's the one that required a 240-foot tower. Option two, which is the the primary emphasis of the application right here, which required a 150-foot tower. And then option one, at the, what would be the top of the hill going up from Creek Road, which requires an 80-foot tower. We did take the intervening time to look, some of the, some of the public had asked about why can't you do it on the other side of the national grid right away? And we did investigate that property. One lot is for sale. However, the folks in that subdivision have been putting deed restrictions, limiting the use to residential as part of that subdivision. So that's not something that we're able to to advance. They also offered to sell it to us, and I don't believe we could get around that deed restriction. But they also said you can buy it, buy it now and own it. But we're not going to give you any sort of timeframe to go through a review process, which is another problem. But the bigger problem is the the deed restrictions limiting lots in that subdivision to residential uses only. What we we also did do in the in the letter that was presented to the boards is we did go out and fly a drone. We did not fly it at the 240-foot location because I, best I can tell, that with a light on top of it was not anyone's preference. But they flew a drone at location one here, the primary location two, and then another location I'll show you in the next map, which is basically down in this area where the text is. And that's up at the top of the hill. It would require a 90-foot tower. And I'll try to play the videos if you want, or Chairman, I defer to you if you want to take them up now, if you want to look at them. But basically, the the videos show you a bird's eye view at of the drone at, you know, the various heights in the air, what you can and can't see. And the idea was to provide some additional information to allow the boards to evaluate the relative strengths or weaknesses of the different locations. And I don't know if I, so.
This is Chairman Oster. You think we could get one of those videos up?
I believe this is Dave.
Which one would you like to say this is Pat?
If you don't mind going through them in order, Mr. Pleto, from location one, two, and then three, if we can get them to work, let's try it out. If not, we'll we'll take it up separately. And this is Dave Brennan. Again, the other option would be to share, share, have me put it up on my screen if you know, using the share screen, I can put, should be able to put it up on mine.
Yeah, it doesn't appear to be burning.
Okay. If this is Dave.
Yep.
This is Dave Brennan. I see you've got host disabled participant screen sharing.
I'm new at this. So this is Pat. Where along the bottom can I change that?
I think you may have to do it, and I might defer to member Stan Cliff. It's probably in the in the options across the top where you can allow someone to do that. This is Dave Brennan. And the other thing is, it may be a setting when you set up the Zoom meeting that to prevent shenanigans, you shut it down. And I don't know if you can turn it off from the the screen or not.
This is Pat. I can't find it. It shows that you have controlled my screen, but.
Okay, it's Dave Brennan again. So well, everyone, we did submit a link so everyone can look at the the videos on their own. And basically, what I was going to try to do is you got something else up there. So what I was going to try to do is go through those videos with you. And basically, I think the the one that I would say to focus on is in the point of this is to see if the board, and I'll take this up again with the zoning board, to move towards if there is a preferred location or not. And certainly, we've heard at the 150-foot tall location, which is the ones where we we have the plans developed for certainly Mr. Collins, who I'll call it roughly is to the north, and the O'Brien family roughly to the south, basically look directly out of their backyards and across their backyards at that tower. And I think what you see is when you look at the drone fly for the 150-foot location, when that drone is circling around and doing a 360, is that you can see, you know, directly into those two yards, which is what, you know, certainly they amongst their other issues they were complaining about. What I do think is the option at the top of the hill, whether it be 80 or 90 feet, we're proposing those as stealth monopine trees. And they're in a stand, each of them is in a stand of trees. And I think when you look at those, you'll see that it takes the the location out of the direct line of sight of a number of the homes, particularly location of video number two at 90 feet. And so what I'd like to do is ask the board to to look at those videos, you know, sometime after the meeting and before the next, and see if we could explore those to see whether there's some consensus. And then at those, that height of 80 or 90 feet, we can propose a stealth tree that would be less visually obtrusive than I would expect 150-foot monopole in the middle of the field. And so that's primarily what the point of those videos are, is to give the board some additional information as to the relative visibility from the different locations. And when you put them in a small stand of trees, there's some screening at the base, and it also moves it out of the direct line of sight of a number of the homes, including, I would also think the it moves it off center from the McDonald residence, which is another husband or wife who spoke that were concerned about looking directly out the backyard at the 150-foot monopole. And so you know, I I think at this point, I don't wish to monopolize the meeting or belabor this. And I would ask that the the board agree to extend the shot clock and put us on for the next agenda. And then we would get our response to the public comments into the board, as well as Mr. LaBerge for review. And if we could just get back on the agenda now that we've dusted this off a little bit, and we'll see where the the governor's executive orders and the reopening of the capital region take us, whether we get to meet a town hall or not in June.
This is Chairman Oster speaking. I had a conversation with Attorney Gilchrist today. And I think maybe for the benefit of the board, I asked whether this would require, if if you're going to go with a now an option four, I guess, would we need to have a public hearing on this? And if I had this correct, and Attorney Gilchrist can jump in here at any time, this may be a response to more comments than it is a change of plans. Is that, am I having that correct, that a public hearing would not be required to have for this?
Attorney Gilchrist, Russ, I think you you reviewed that correctly, that well, this is interesting. I'm just looking at my screen. We now do have the the drone video. So as we're watching this, Dave, while it's on the screen, maybe you can explain to the board, and we'll get back to the public hearing issue.
Sure, Dave Brennan speaking. Mr. Pleto, do you mind if you could grab your screen and and back it up? Because it's about going to end in about 20 seconds. It looks like it's almost done on that video. There you go. Thank you. So this is the first location at 90 feet. Sorry, this is the second location at 90 feet. And it's looking essentially due west now. And as you come around, you're looking now, these houses coming into the screen are the top of San Cherry. And what you'll see is this, the view from them is largely through the trees. That house that's now coming in to view is the 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 O'Brien house. And you can see the opening that looks out that down the hill a little bit further. We're now panning headed towards due roughly southeast. If you look at the compass in the upper right corner, you can see where we're looking on the compass. But we're looking out now over the fields roughly towards Creek Road. And then we're coming back around and coming onto the screen in a moment will be the Collins Homes and and Barnes and Al Buildings with the red. And again, now we're looking a little more through the trees. In the foreground, you're seeing the tops of the trees. And now we're coming back around, and we're going to be seeing some of the homes behind the, some of the trees eagle crests. And so this puts it into a stand of trees in behind some trees, and it could be done as a stealth monopine. And I believe that at 90 feet would have been the the second location, which is what what the chairman was referring to as the is the new alternative. So it does say at the top of that, Mr. Pleto put up location two. If it's if it's possible, do you have the others queued up, Mr. Pleto?
It takes a few minutes for it to load in because the files are big. So if you want to keep talking, I'll start loading them in.
Certainly, it's Dave Brennan speaking again. So in response, I believe the chairman was asking a question about whether this was in response to comments. And it certainly was in response to comments where we were seeking And it certainly was in response to comments where we were seeking to propose an alternative that was more palatable, that was the shortest height possible, and also one that could be camouflage as a stealth monopine tree. And I, I do think in particularly it, it hopefully addresses some of the concerns, particularly if you were to view the video that Mr. Polito's queuing up now at a, this one is, this is the first, so this is location one at the top of the hill. It's 80 feet above grade. Again, it's in the, the stand of trees. So this is one of the original locations at the top of the hill. And as you see, we're, we'd be proposing to put it in the stand of trees. And you see, this is a leaf off condition, but there's a fair amount of screening behind a number of the homes. So this is what the tip of the, top of the tower would be at. And there would be, well, there would be some visibility of it would as a monopine. But that's house that just went through the screen was the McDonald house with the pool, where it's now no longer front and center out the back. As you come around here and you look, you'll see the top of San Cherry in those houses. And again, as it comes around, you'll see that it, this location, like location two, takes it out of the, the backyard visibility of the O'Briens who have the opening in their backyard that looks directly across at Mr. Collins' house. And those pines that you just saw in the foreground are where the 150 foot tower would go. And so basically it pulls it up to the top of the hill and gets it out of the, the, basically the, the crossfire of the view sheds out of the back of Mr. Collins and Mr. O'Brien from our perspective. So this one is located.
This is the same one. The third one hasn't loaded yet.
Okay. This is the, still the first one, yes.
Correct.
So Attorney Gilchrist again, and then responding again to the chairman. The information that's been submitted, I think is properly viewed as part of the response to the public comments, particularly with respect to visual impact. And one way to address that is to propose a location still on the project site that tries to address comments concerning visual impact. So we can review that, Russ, but I do see it in the nature of a response to public comments.
Okay, this is Dave Brennan again. So.
The third.
Thank you. So Mr. Polito has the third one. This is the 150 foot location as we're coming around, looking at the top of San Cherry. And as you see right coming into the screen, that's the backyard of Mr. and Mrs. O'Brien. And so there, we've got photo sims of this as well, but it sees that looks, thank you, directly. You know, they're looking directly out their backyard across their pool at this location, and then further into the view shed into Mr., towards Mr. Collins. And he looks correspondingly back. And so I think, you know, leave it to what people believe. But I think it was highlighting that, you know, they've got a direct view. And as you move it further up the hill, decrease the height and stealth that it goes a long way towards mitigating what, you know, I'll let them obviously speak for themselves, right? I heard them loud and clear that they, they didn't like the fact that it was directly out their, their backyard like that at 150 feet tall, excuse me, tall. We're coming across the, the hayfields eventually. It'll be at the bottom of the, excuse me, the cornfields. The bottom would be Crick Road. We're coming back across and Mr. Collins' property will come into the frame momentarily as we rotate. There's the, his outbuildings in the, in the home. As you see, it's directly, they're looking directly across at it too. As you rotate eventually a little bit further, you'll see coming into the frame, the ground elevation goes up and there's the stand of trees where, and it looks very close, but it's a decent bit away. So behind that standard trees in the middle of the frame would be where a stealth monopine, that would be location one. Right, a little bit to the left of there, but you had, Pat, you had your cursor right about in there would be where the stealth monopine could go. And then if it rotates a little bit further, you'll see there's a little hook before you get to the top of the cornfield, there's a little bit of pasture or grass coming up and behind the.
Want me to go backwards or?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep. It must, it must have been at the beginning. We missed, we missed it because it's just out of the frame. It's at the beginning of the video. I apologize. So this is again, the house directly in front of is the McDonald house. They were unhappy looking across their pool at this. But as you look, coming into the center of the frame, if you could pause right about now, there's a little bit where the cursor is a little bit to the left of that is where it would be the other potential for a stealth monopine would be back in there and hidden in that tree. And it puts it tucked away from the majority of the direct views that were giving rise to some of the, some of the, the criticism and concerns. And at that location where the cursor is would be a 90 foot tree. At that height, there's always this tension of, you can only have so many sets of antennas on it and have them work. So at, at an 80 or 90 foot tall antenna center line with the cap on, with the 15 foot cap on top of it, it would be AT&amp;T and Verizon Wireless antennas. It would be not expected that you could put additional antennas because they would be getting so close to the ground. It would be unlikely that Sprint and T-Mobile would be interested in that height. So there's always a tension between going low and doing a stealth tree and the number of carriers you can put on it. That is a trade off that, that Blue Sky is willing to, to make and, and make this work and do it in, you know, the, the, the best case that we have is to do a stealth monopine tree.
Chairman Oster speaking. Thank you, Dave, for that presentation. And thank Pat for figuring out how to put the videos on. I thought they were very helpful. But I, I think everybody can go online, look up the minutes of the, the planning board on the town website. And those, what do I want to say? Those connections to those videos are available on, on the town website, if you want to take a look at them again. I have a question for Attorney Gilchrist at this point. Do we have to make a motion to, on the shot clock?
No, that's not necessary. That, that's something that we've extended previously, just on a letter.
Okay.
And I think what I'd like to do is have the opportunity to review that again with, and discuss it with you and the zoning board chairman. And then follow up with, with Mr. Brennan prior to the expiration of the current shot clock.
This is Chairman Oster. Thank you on that. So I, I got the impression, Dave, that you will be forwarding your final written comments shortly. Is that correct?
Dave Brennan speaking. Yes, Chairman, I do have my letter largely done. We were waiting for a couple of attachments and we'll get that out. And again, if I could, with the board's indulgence, if we could be held on the agenda. And if it makes sense, we would, we would come back in and review those with you. And again, if, after people have a chance to study the drone fly videos, maybe it would be, you know, a time to have an additional discussion about the, the various thoughts from the board members as to the relative strengths or weaknesses of the, of the options.
Chairman Oster, I agree that that would be great if we could get those, those comments by our next meeting. So we can discuss them and move forward on this a little bit. So our next meeting is scheduled for the fourth. We do have two public hearings, just so you know that. And we already have one item on the agenda right now, I believe, for the fourth. So I don't see it as a problem. So we'll put you on our, our main agenda for that date.
Dave Brennan, thank you.
Now, this is member Tarbox. I was up at Half Moon last week and they were putting up one of those monopole stealth pine trees at the corner where Salty's used to be. Behind the, there's a pizza shop there now. I don't know if you're familiar with that or not, Dave.
Sure. Dave Brennan speaking. That, that one that you're speaking of, my office did the permitting for that. I didn't do it. One of my predecessors, Mike Cusack, that some of you may have met, did that one. And that was originally built actually in about 2010. It's been there for, I would say roughly a decade. And what you did see though, is they recently extended it. I believe another carrier went on. And so they took some branches off and reconfigured it and added 10 or 20 feet. I, I wasn't involved with it. So there is one there. If the, there's a newer one is actually, if you leave Salty's and go on Grooms Road and cross the northway, we, actually there's one that was built in the last 12 months. I can, I can email the, the address to that. And then there are, there's one up behind Catholic Central High School on top of Gurley Avenue, which I'm not sure that I've ever seen. That, that's again about 10 years old. And there's one at the top of, if you go up Route 40 in the Scata Coke, right as you come into the Hamlet of Melrose, there's one at the top where the town used to have a water tank. There's a very large hill just as you come into, to Melrose where Valley Falls Road splits off. And there's one there you can look at. That's probably the closest one I know of to, to the town of Brunswick.
Chairman Oster, thank you. Any other comments from the members?
How tall is the one that, that Salty's?
That's Dave Brennan speaking. I, I would have to look it up. I didn't do the zoning on it originally, so I, I don't have the best sense. I, I do know the planner up there pretty well. I could send, his name's Rich Harris. I could send him an email and he could probably tell me fairly quickly what the, what it was extended to. And I do have the plans for the other one in the town of Clifton Park that was just built. I'd have to just look that up. I want to say that one was in the vicinity of 90 or 100 feet tall. But I could look that up and I could send an email to, to the board.
This is Chairman Oster. Thank you. Is there someone that wanted to say something? I thought I heard somebody try to come in on the conversation. Okay, so we will put you on the agenda for the, for our meeting on schedule for June 4th. If there's nothing else.
Attorney Gilchrist here. David, if you could try to get that in as early as you could next week, that would give Ron LaBerge time to review that as well and be able to discuss at least initial review of, of the response to comments on the June 4th meeting.
Dave Brennan speaking. Understood. I'll, I will see what we can do to get the thing out the door as early as possible next week.
Very good.
And while I'm signing off, thank you for putting this on. I've hosted a couple of these and it's quite a change to our, our way of doing things. And Mr. Polito, thank you for running, running the, the, the controls and good night.
Chairman Oster, good night. Thank you. Okay, that concludes our, our agenda. I do not believe there is any new business at this point. Just to review our upcoming meetings, I would assume at this point that we would have Zoom meetings until further notice. So at our next meeting, I have two public hearings. One is for the, let me see. What is for the? The grab waiver of subdivision? No, 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 no. Yes.
Yeah.
That was a part of the Nickel Hill, I believe. Is that correct?
This is Chuck. That is correct. And the other one is the special use permit for 46 Bot Lane.
Correct. And then on that agenda also for tonight, we're adding the Galivan minor subdivision. The cell tower that we just concluded. And Pharaoh has got a public hearing scheduled for the 18th. And Ace is, let's see.
Ace is also June 4th, Russ. Attorney Gilchrist.
Thank you.
This is Chuck again from the building department. We were just waiting on the county for the 825 Lewis Street Ace.
And just as a reminder, you have to get one out for the, the Pharaoh project.
That is correct. Yep. Check the status of both of them tomorrow morning.
Okay. All right. I have no other business. At this point, we'll do a roll call. Adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn? I'll make the motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Yep.
Members, Member Stan Cliff.
Okay, Attorney Gilchrist, this is Chairman Oster. Attorney Gilchrist, will you do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Attorney Gilchrist here. Member Henderson?
Member Henderson, aye.
Member Krieger?
Member Krieger, aye.
Member Minello?
Member Minello, aye.
Chairman Oster?
Chairman Oster, aye.
Member Stan Cliff?
Member Stan Cliff, aye.
Member Tarbox?
Member Tarbox, aye.
And note that Member Peterson is absent.
All right, that concludes our meeting. Good night, everyone. And I thought we did all right for our second meeting out. I'd like to thank Pat for once again being our moderator. I don't know how long that's going to. Are you going to be our permanent moderator at this point?
I don't know. We'll see.
All right. Wish everybody a good night. Stay safe and we will see you all on the 4th.
Thank you.
Hey, Andy?
Yes.
Phil texted me. He'd like you to give him a call.
Very good.
All righty.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.